Let's call this meeting to order. Dr. Currie, would you open the prayer, please?
Sure. Well, we thank you for the opportunity to get together and really consider what we can do to improve our college. We ask you to bless our work today. Give us wisdom. Keep us safe. Pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you. Any public comments? Seeing that there aren't none, we're moving on to the next owner of business, which is consider, discuss, and approve the Hellis Construction Eek contract.
My attorney board, you have a contract with Hellis Construction. This is an energy agreement to construct a softball facility on the campus of Trinity Valley Community College pending city approval. Don't inferment approval.
You were sent a copy of this agreement last week, I guess. Okay, and this agreement's been reviewed by our council, Lee Porter, and also our staff. Does anyone have any comments and want to speak to it? See anybody having questions?
What is the date that it's going to be started? Once you got it approved, you can give the estimate plans, you're going to be ready to fall?
We're shooting to get to the city, application to the city by June 11th to go through the zoning and planning development committee. It would be before the city council on July 7th. Once that starts, we should have an early fall start date. It's anywhere from 90 days to 120 days for total completion. Our goal is to be ready for the spring 2026 season.
I'm sorry, I was regretting. We have Coach Wynn here, and I'd like for her to say, do you have any comments about the proposed stadium?
I'm super excited about the facility and our championship area, please, but to play on campus is something that we could do.
See anybody else have any questions? Here we hear a motion to approve the contract with Hellis Construction for the purpose of building a softball field on the Trinity Valley campus.
I'll make that motion.
Second, second, is there any discussion? Before we have a vote, I do want to say, I'd like to ask Dr. Morrison to talk to us about the funding of it and how that.
Earlier in the year, we received a gift from the Kane Foundation for $1.5 million paid out over five years. We've already received the first check of that. We have worked this in with our current capital improvement projects to continue to maintain and grow to set a slower rate our capital reserves throughout the construction of this project until the full receipt of the Kane Foundation. We are very healthy as, we're extremely healthy as an institution. This year, we did receive an increase in our productivity funding formula. That supplemental preparation is now on the governor's desk. Actually, it's in the controller's office, waiting to be signed by the governor, and that performance funding added $2 million to our funding this year. We're still setting, we have a couple of projects we're bringing to the board in June that we have to do some backwater, backflow maintenance and a couple of electrical projects out of our contingency. But we're looking to be adding $1.5 to $1.7 million of our current $2 million contingency reserves as well. So that's $3.7 million, not including revenue excessive expenses. That'll be going towards our reserves at the end of this fiscal year, which Hellis pays for this $2 million project.
But at the end of five years, we will have received from the Kane Foundation a million and a half.
And we'd like. The total project all in will be around 2.25 million. We'll have to repair the walking track. We want to cover any electrical that's not within 100 feet of the connection to the press box and the lights. And we'll have some other small things to address. The road that we're going to reconstruct is going to be addressed out of money that we put into the capital improvement parking lot fund. We're going to use this first year allotment to address the road off Prairie View to make that the main entrance into the stadium. And all parking will be behind the fence, outfield fence.
I do have a question. Did each start with talking? Can I? What kind of, from a marketing perspective, are we going to help educate the community about what's coming?
We have produced a white page document that addresses all kinds of times of practice, games, number of games a year. We have addressed, we got a document that addresses the lighting, which is not, has no light pollution these days. We're all aware of the new LED lighting. So there's no light pollution. So we have prepared a white page document. We have received materials from Hellis that address the lighting and the type of lighting. And once we enter the contract, we'll be receiving from them all renderings and things of that nature for sharing.
And we have shared with the community what we've put together so far and some members of the community. And our plan is prior to taking it to the city for official application to go back to them, which the more finalized elevations and whatnot to discuss that voting. There are concerns regarding noise.
Someone louder, Steve. I can't hear.
There are concerns concerning this in terms of noise, lights, in traffic. As Dr. Morrison pointed out on the site that he was just referring to, there's no direct road from the ball field to the park lane. Comes off Prairieville Street and exit on our campus drive along with parking on the north, northwest side of the stadium. An effort's been made to take into account the neighborhood, and we are in communication with several of them. And we'll continue that as we move forward.
Another question I'd like to address to Dr. Morrison. Could you talk to us a little bit about the advantages this would be over what we are existing situation we have now? And just talk a little bit about how this would be for us, you know, to have this here. Maybe Coach would expand on some of that. What are our advantages to have this right here?
As a college program, having your own facilities is essential. When we look at the programs that we recruit head to head within our region, we are the only ones without a campus facility. And we're one of few now that does not have a turf facility. It plays heavily into the recruiting process for our student athletes. I do know in seeing recruiting visits, it is when you have to tell a recruit, oh, we gotta go drive to the field. And they're, because they ask, where's your field at? And they're on campus. You're like, oh, we gotta drive to it. It's just about a point of pride, you know, being a, what I would consider a top 10 bars our athletic programs, one of the top programs in the country. This would elevate us even further by having our own facilities that we do not have to worry about people entering in illegally, using our stuff without our knowledge, leaving our stuff in the middle of the field after they've jumped the fence in the middle of the night. We've come across homeless people in the bathrooms before during practice times. This would give us a true sophisticated college facility. I don't know if Coach Wynn wants to add to that or if I was covered it well enough.
You've covered a lot of it. I think too, just the opportunities for our other students to be able to watch us play, our faculty staff to be able to watch us play. When it's here, they can walk over and maybe catch a couple of innings. But if they get in their car and drive. And then we play two games primarily. So a lot of times when that second game happens, we'll lose a lot of our fans because we don't have a concession stand. We don't have those things that keep the attention of them. Whereas if they walk back to their office for 20, 30 minutes, then they might come back as well. So I think it could help student engagement on our campus that doesn't even directly involve our student athletes as well. But huge, huge competitive advantage for us in the recruiting side of things. We have, in my opinion, what everybody in this room has been the best junior college in Ridgemore team. And to be able to match those things and put us in more competitive advantage to attract tighter in student athletes.
Do we have times that we're needing to use the facility over there in Park and we aren't able to, I mean, you know, has it been a challenge at all?
It's challenging to get out there in the late afternoons once about March rolls around because they start their evenings. And so what we see is it doesn't directly affect us on the practice field. But foul balls, now we have little people running around where they're trying to get onto our field or hanging in our bleachers and things like that. So we come to distraction. In addition to some of our home games, we have to run out community members, maybe they're in the batting cages when we're playing because it's just, they don't really understand kind of the level of play and the boundaries that they have during our games in comparison to what the boundaries don't exist when we're not out there. Because the batting cage on the third base side is technically not ours, but it's ours during our practicing game times. So it presents a little bit of problems for our game day administrators and the opposing team as well. So there's some hurdles that we obviously face. But we practice primarily in the morning or midday, so we don't necessarily have to interact with the community or party and try to do the things like that. We also try to go in the lowest traffic time because as coaches, we do have our eyes on the parking lot. We do have our eyes on people walking in between the fences and things like that because we are responsible for those 20, 25 young women that are out there with us. So we definitely try to, don't try to practice in the evenings because when it gets dark and a foul ball, we have to go chase it. And then, you know, we don't ever want anyone to be out there by themselves. We can't physically have a zone at all times. So just a little bit of safety issues.
And we have security here.
Yes.
And you mentioned a while ago, Ginger, about the turf field and the one reason that it's necessary that they've had to redirect conference games even to Muskeet or other locations to have a game because our field didn't drain properly. Whereas if we'd had this, they would have had an opportunity to play soon as the clouds would have.
Just one other question that I wanted to, I think I know, but you know, right now, there's a lot of tournaments that are going on. Will we be engaging in a lot of evening tournaments? Will you let kind of the public know about?
I mean, we.
Because is it revenue for the college if we did?
We host revenue, we'll host camps. We're not looking to get into the tournament hosting business.
So we would have night events and we would have every weekend.
Because that is adds wear and tear to your facilities.
So the people in the community or back over there, they would be able to take a two o'clock afternoon nap if they wanted to without all this noise?
Our goal is to use it for Trinity Valley purposes only for our games, camps, and things like that. We're not looking, now, we would like to be able to host our regional tournament. That happens over a four day period. It's an excellent economic revenue for our area because hotels are full, restaurants are full. Currently, since we do not have the right facilities, we can't make application to host the regional tournament, our regional tournament. But that happens, you get to host it, what is it, two years every? Every four years, get hosted for two years straight. Right now, it's hosted at San Jack and Moser Paris. We would love that opportunity to host the tournament here because it would truly benefit our community economically. The other reason we can't get a regional tournament right now is because we do not have enough hotel space. But we know that they're addressing the hotel space. So that's going to open up a lot of opportunities to host basketball, volleyball, and softball.
Well, teenage baseball, if you want any of that, if they can't use our facilities, are we hoping to have to let them use?
No, it's, it's a softball field, so we're not.
We'll have any of that.
No.
Thank you. Tell my question.
Coach Wynn, the the amount of time that normally I went to several games and you very seldom ever turn your lights on. You know, if it's throughout the year. And that's one concern some of the neighbors have expressed is that the noise and light factor. And I think they, you asked a good question, Trustee Morton, because it's not like the, the local, the Teenage Baseball Association, Softball Association, they start in March and they play till July every night. And that's not the case. We have a field over there. We don't even use it, do we?
No, we don't. All we will do with that field from this point forward until the kids come back on campus in August is we will maintain it by mowing it, watering it, dragging it, all of those things. It's the wear and tear maintenance part. And that's, that's where another part of the turf piece is huge for us as a staff. In addition to Ed Raliffe, is we spend a lot of time maintaining that facility because it's off campus. So the ownership is on the coaching staff to take care of those things. So as far as the lights, you know, we don't typically practice in the evenings ever unless we know we're going to go play a night game somewhere. We're playing in a tournament. We're going to have a night game just so we can be prepared and practice to be under the lights. The lights are just very important for us from a perspective of if we have a turf facility that rains and we have to move the games back because of the weather, we're being able to do that in that regard. So we're not anticipating on adding a lot of night game to our schedule any differently than what we have now. So there are lights coming from now. They're adequate. So we're not trying to play under them if we don't have to because they're very adequate. From a noise perspective, we do play music at our practice. I don't think that anyone, you know, it's not obscene or allowed that anyone has made any kind of, you know, concessions to the city of Athens since we're out there, you know, during practicing when people have the ability to walk around and things like that. So those are some things that we need to address and not play those. That's things that we can definitely do. Obviously, there's an atmosphere to our games that you want to provide. So we would definitely have to have, you know, announcing and some music and some things like that, but.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, that experience is very important, definitely.
But I did hear you say, it's one thing I heard you say, that oftentimes you don't have to use the lights. So it wouldn't be something that you would automatically turn on the lights if you didn't need them at that period of time. So that would be something that we could ease the communities knowing about. You know, we're not going to say we're not going to use it, but I mean, that's, you know, not the right thing. But what I'm hearing you say, oftentimes, you know, you don't have to use it. I mean, we have a longer days, nights, you know, it's not like.
Well, your opponents' travel time, a lot of your opponents are just like us. They want to get back on the road, get here, get games, get back on the road because, you know, we always play too. And so a lot of our opponents, they're, you know, everybody's on budgets. And so if they play into the night, then they're having to address, well, how long's their bus driver been up, blah, blah, blah. But if they play at certain times, we typically look at one and three, two and four. And that's because at the request of not only us and our opponents. Typically, the lights will come in handy when we make application to host regional play.
In the early February, it's usually pretty chilly when the sun goes down. So a lot of times, we're trying to play earlier in the day. And then when we play later in the day, the majority of that is because, as Coach, you know, Dr. Morrison said, it's, our daylight is longer. So because we're outside, we're going to take a lot of consideration into the weather as well. So.
Do 25 is a longest day. That'd be good, right?
It isn't. We're not playing in June like that. We want to be playing in May for sure.
Okay, let me have just a little clarification, President Grant. I want to know, we as a board here, we do plan to communicate very well with that community over there. And we're going to answer all their questions and educate them so they have a good understanding and not a misunderstanding of what we're really trying to do, not me.
That's why we've already started that effort with a preliminary effort in giving them some, a white paper study.
Right.
But, but I have, I have told the neighborhood that prior to commencing with the city, we will bring a more detailed approach and be prepared to answer any questions and talk about any concerns they may have.
We can't do that or won't necessarily be able to do that until we have the city's approval. So we haven't.
No, no, we, we won't, we won't, we will have the documentation. And we can give them a more fuller, a fuller view of the overall project and be able to answer questions before we go to the city. And we're doing that in case the neighborhood would have something that we can act, we can adjust to and work with them on. That's, and it may be some things that we can't. But the process is trying to be a good steward and a good manager in the community we're in. But we also have some needs as a college. It's very important.
Yeah. So. Is it possible that the white page or the video or voiceover, whatever communication is being done, anytime you log on Trinity Valley website, they could go in, click on that link and hear what may be going on with the project? If they got questions.
I think we can provide the white page and the rendering. As far as the lighting, we're working with them. We met with Hellis last week. They're supposed to provide us some additional imagery of the zero light pollution. And I've actually made communication locally to maybe do some footage of a current field in our area that was built by the same company to examine the light pollution. I almost say examined because there is no light pollution anymore. It's basically spotlights onto the field that we can produce our own imagery as well.
But I think what we're trying to do is give the folks that will be most impacted the first look at it before we just.
Just be as transparent as possible.
That's right.
Yeah.
Do you have a little comment on the roads, you know, as far as that? Park Drive is not going to be traveled on. It's going to go different. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we, in our proposal, that will be going to the city as well. It's going to address about us updating that road off Prairieville, making that the main entrance and parking being centered. The parking on the park side, avenue side would be ADA parking. When we have game days, we would focus on that ADA parking. But you got to remember, on a daily average, when school's in session, we have 90 plus cheerleaders that are already going up to that area. So there's already traffic because that facility is used by our cheer squad for practice. So they're already going up there during the day. So I do not anticipate any additional load. But we did want to focus on the game day parking to be off Prairieville and off Cardinal to park behind the fence. And ADA parking to be over there closer to the facility.
But there's no direct route from Park Drive to that.
Yeah, there will be no north, or.
Or south.
Yeah, north, south drive anymore because the field will be taking up that location.
Okay, I love questions. I hope you don't mind, but I just have to have my mind filled and have knowledge. Would you just share one other thing? Because I know a lot of time was, has been spent. But the location, can you talk a little bit about that location and maybe why it was selected? Was there any other location that we could have considered or did you consider?
We, we looked at several locations on campus. As far as, you know, we, we don't have a lot of, we're space poor. So we looked at a couple of locations on campus. This became the primary location because A, it's already the home to our softball locker rooms and facilities for indoor hitting. It is a space that needs attention because it's pretty rundown as it is already up on the hill. This would prevent a re, kind of rework and re beautification of that area. I mean, softball field takes up about 44,000 square feet to be exact. So it really became the ideal location based on the other sports that we have. You know, they all have to have their locations. And so that's why we kind of locked in on that area because we really thought it would bring a better and cleaner look to our campus and would actually connect our campus a little more and more strongly between the south side and the north side, making it kind of more of a whole look. So yes, we, the last year has been spent planning and dreaming. I would say longer year, they're going to have been planning and dreaming of this facility and the best location for this facility. So it, there's been a lot of, lot of work done by the AD, Maria, Tony and his crew of what's going to work best.
You've answered all my questions and I feel like I'm well informed, even though I have all my toolbox here, but just those things that I needed to have answered so I can help other people if anyone asks. How would be the best place, Steve, if we're asked as a trustee, just refer them to Dr. Morrison or to you or just wait for a community meeting? What, how would you like? Because I don't feel like I'm that knowledgeable. I feel pretty good about now.
Until we're able to get what final the next step of documents in, I think it would be best to say that we're working on a permanent, you know, some other documents which will further illustrate what it is. And and then when we have them, I'd like to share it with the people around the neighborhoods first. Coach, right now, we have the white paper thing and it's not as impressive as what's going to come about if we go ahead and finalize your vote.
You're going to become very popular in the spring with all the small little districts around here. They're going to be asking to use that facility. So you're going to need to have some kind of policy because Mallacoff, Houston, all of those around here that have grass fields, that's the same issue that you had when we have rain. So you're going to need to have an idea of what you're going to do.
And we've updated our facility policy. Yeah, we have updated our facility policy for all of our facilities. We'll just include this in that facility policy. And everything, because, yeah, I know Atkins, ISD, it's, they host a lot of the, all their turf facilities host a lot of their tournaments and stuff. Honestly, that is not the business that we're looking to get in. We're not looking to get into that because it is a lot of wear and tear on your facility. So.
And it's being a good steward to the people in that community because, you know, if we put ourselves in their places, I'm taking a nap at two o'clock or whatever, and if we didn't have every little pee wee softball team coming, even though we understand and we know their problems, but I think we do need to have some restrictions.
I got one question for Coach. Did I mishear you? You said that in maintaining, your coaching staff go out and maintain the field?
Yes, sir.
Is that a preference?
No, sir.
I didn't know whether.
We are more fortunate to have Ed Ratliff, who spends all of his off work time maintaining that field.
And he does a tremendous job.
Okay.
Well, there is a maintenance aspect for these kind of fields also.
Yeah.
There's usually a machine that you run over again, the turf, to make sure that it doesn't get backed down.
Right.
So there's still some maintenance to it, although not as much as with the grass field.
We probably spend between manpower hours and supplies somewhere between $25,000 and $40,000 a year on maintaining that facility.
And in the contract, they provide the device that
What I'm getting.
Balances the pellets.
Yes. Will that still be Coach's ideal or would that be part of the?
Typically, coaches handle their their facility.
I mean, I know it used to mop the floor, but.
It's Juco Life. And that's just, that's just an aspect of Juco Life.
Okay.
Well, maybe you're wrong here.
Yeah. I guess I can learn how to operate that machine.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, no more comments. We've had a motion made most a second to accept the contract with Hellis Construction Eek. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Do hear a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being here.